Hello, I'm Mark Ellis, Barnstable Town Manager, and this is my Town Manager Communication for August 13th, 2024. I'll start by saying that I plan to withdraw Appropriation Order 25006 in the amount of $35,000 proposed for the purposes of paying for outside council expenses of our town legal department. These funds were proposed to allow the town legal department to work with outside council to develop a legal strategy to oppose the planned landing of cable from offshore wind projects at Doses Beach in Osterville. Town Council has scheduled a workshop on August 15th, 2024 to receive a briefing from the legal department on the status of that project and to discuss future potential action by the town relative to that matter. On July 30th, 2024, I received an email from John Cox, President of Cape Cod Community College, and the email read as follows. "Monday, July 29th marked a truly historic moment in our college's history and the history of public higher education in Massachusetts with Governor Maura Healey signing of the FY 2025 state budget. This landmark legislation enacts universal free community college across the Commonwealth. The new program, Mass Educate, pairs with the existing Mass Reconnect program to allow all Massachusetts residents who have not yet earned a bachelor's degree the ability to attend community college for free. Under this model, students must complete the free application for federal student aid." It's referred to as FAFSA. "Massachusetts will cover any remaining balance after applying all federal aid and grants determined through FAFSA and scholarships awarded. Last year, the elimination of financial barriers for our students aged 25 and older provided a transformative Cape Cod Community College welcomed more than 1,400 students who attended tuition-free. Over 900 received a combination of federal aid grant scholarships and Mass Reconnect funding, while over 500 attended entirely on federal aid grants and scholarships. The introduction of free college without age restrictions promises to create even more opportunity, allowing students to pursue their higher education goals and improve their lives and live-- and I'm sorry, lives of their families. To learn more about free college in Massachusetts, including eligibility for the program, I've provided the link that'll take you right to the Cape Cod Community College site. I'm including this in my Town Manager Communication because Cape Cod Community College is located in Barnstable. I interact regularly with the college, and I've received a lot of calls from families in our community and beyond. Cape Cod Community College seems to be one of the few community colleges that came right out with a communication that this was available to our Massachusetts residents and certainly residents of Barnstable. And so I wanted to at least share this link with you because this is really important for many families hoping that they and their students can attend college. A budget calendar for fiscal year 2026 operating budget and capital improvement plan will be prepared and issued by the end of this month. We begin capital and operating budget preparation discussions in September. Town Council conducts a joint meeting with the school committee, typically in October, in accordance with the town charter, to review financial conditions and financial policies of the town. And our Town Council strategic plan is a fundamental part of the basic assumptions and will be used as policy guidance in staff's development of the FY 26 capital and operating budgets. So we're in budget season and more to come. The Healy Driscoll administration announced that the town of Barnstable will receive a $42 million award for Barnstable Renewable Powered Microgrid Project. The award is from the U.S. Department of Energy Transmission Citing and Economic Development Grant Program, which is funded by the Inflation Reduction Act. The town, through Sean Hogan, our environmental and sustainability manager, partnered with the Department of Energy Resources to apply for this grant. Working with the Department of Energy Resources, we're in the process of reviewing the grant award documents to fully understand the obligation within this grant and to determine the future reporting requirements associated with the project. When we have a more thorough understanding of the terms and conditions of the grant, we will bring forward a formal presentation to Town Council for acceptance. This project, when implemented, is expected to lower energy costs, improve indoor air quality, and strengthen climate resilience for our town. As has been reported by the state and by local information outlets, the microgrid will include Barnstable High School, Intermediate School, and our Barnstable Adult Community Center. They will install a renewable-powered microgrid at the school complexes that serves over 2,400 students. So exciting news, and we look forward to the details. Well, it is August, and this is an update to our beach operations. As summer winds down, the town has begun consolidating beach operations. We've already reported to you that there are lifeguard reductions at Sandy Neck, Loop Beach, Hathaway's Pond, and the last day for lifeguards at the following beaches are Galmas Beach, August 15th, Veterans Beach, August 17th, Doses Beach, August 20th, and Kovals Beach, August 22nd. We'll keep you informed of any other changes. We continue to closely monitor our beaches and waterways for any signs of debris resulting from the Vineyard Wind turbine incident. Marine and Environmental Affairs and our community services personnel are prepared to respond accordingly. We urge any member of the public that spots any debris in the water or onshore to report it to the Debris Reporting Hotline, and I've provided that number in my Town Manager Communication. But for those of you who are listening, 833-609-5768. We encourage residents and visitors to download the My Barnstable app from the Apple or Google Play Store. It doesn't cost anything. The app provides updates on a wide range of information in the town, including traffic advisories, beach updates, Sandy Neck off-road availability, and more. When I reported this last time, I got some questions afterwards. If you load this and if you log in, there is a "Report a Problem." I think people were looking for something other than that. What I had recommended to residents is they can use this as a means of communication. And really, what you do-- if you're just looking to access the town website, you can do that. But certainly, if you're using it to be able to report a problem or a concern or make a comment, you just go to "Report a Problem," and you put everything in through that. And once you do that, we will direct it to the appropriate location within the town. On Wednesday, August 14th, the Barnstable Police Department, along with Hyannis, CORMM, Catuitt, Barnstable, and West Barnstable Fire Departments, will be hosting the 27th Annual Kids' Day Celebration at Barnstable High School from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The free event will include demonstrations and displays from several fire department and law enforcement agencies. There will be hot dogs, ice cream, drinks, as well as a number of fun activities. The day kicks off with a parade of emergency vehicles and bagpipes at the east end of the school near the football field. It begins promptly at 10:00 a.m., and everyone is welcome. Now, we're going to receive updates from our town clerk, Ann Quirk, on vote by mail and early voting. Then James Cupford, our Acting Director of Planning and Development, will provide an update on a local comprehensive plan and the Greening the Gateway Program. And we'll conclude with Kelly Colpey, Communications Manager for the Public Works Department, providing an update on water resource management planning, including the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the voting early, by mail, and eventually in person. Today's date is Tuesday, the 13th, and as of today, going post office to post office, we will have mailed out 7,681 ballots, early voting ballots, by mail. On August the 24th, that's the last day that you can register to vote or change your party or change your address. Also, on August the 24th, which is a Saturday, this office-- this town clerk's office here at 367 Main Street-- will be open all day because of the last day to register to vote. At the same time, I will have people working over at 200 Main Street from 8:00 a.m. until noon time for early voting in person. And then on Sunday, another day for early voting in person, another four hours, 8:00 a.m. to noon, again at 200 Main Street. The remainder of the week, Monday through Friday, we will have people at 200 Main Street to do early voting in person the entire week, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Then it ends. So if you want to get a vote-by-mail ballot, the deadline to get this is the 30th of August. September 3rd, the day after the holiday, the polling locations will be open from 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. throughout Barnstable. I have additional information that will fall in for the November election, but I think I should end it here.
All right. Hello, Jim Cupford here with the Planning and Development Department, Interim Director of Planning and Development. I'm here to report on two programs ongoing here in the Planning and Development Office. First, I'll discuss our local comprehensive plan. The next meeting of the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee will be held on Thursday, August 22nd, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. here at Town Hall. At that meeting, we will build upon the significant efforts achieved to date, including our existing conditions report, our community vision statement, and the chapter's goals and strategies. And we will meet back with our LCP committee to kick off a mapping exercise to update the town's future land use map. And a lot of interest has been maintained on creating our next 10 years of land use strategies, and this is an integral part to that. The future land use map will reflect on what Barnstable should be over the next 10 years by providing general guidance for density, character, preservation, and location of land uses. To learn more about this important process and to stay up to date on the meetings and community events, please visit our project website at barnstablelcp.com. Secondly, I'd like to report on a brief update on Greening Hyannis. So the town was awarded a grant through Greening the Gateway Cities Program to plant up to 2,400 trees in our community's environmental justice area. This is an important project for our Hyannis neighborhoods. All properties within the planting zone, including private property owners, are eligible to sign up for free trees. To date, as we've just gotten started, a total of 85 trees have already been planted in the town's planting zone, with over 100 more individuals signed up for free trees. The town kicked off this effort on Arbor Day by planting 18 trees at the high school and intermediate school campus. And since then, additional trees have been planted on several properties, including throughout our Barnstable Housing Authority properties, the Hyannis West Elementary School, and several private properties. The project website is greeninghyannis.com. On that website, you'll find an interactive map illustrating where trees have been planted to date and all the associated data, including total number of trees and street addresses in which they have been planted and where you can learn more. Again, that is greeninghyannis.com. Thank you.
Hello, Kelly Colpey, the Department of Public Works, and I will be walking you through our Water Resources Management update. First, we're going to take a look at our watershed permit status. As you may recall, the final watershed permit regulations and Title V Natural Resource Nitrogen Sensitive Area Regulations went into effect just over a year ago on July 7th of 2023. Just a few short months after that, on September 1st of 2023, the town of Barnstable submitted its full application for a watershed permit. Barnstable was the first community on Cape Cod to submit its watershed application per the new regulations. And as of the date of this report, we remain the only community, with our neighboring communities having only submitted their NOI. Our application, as a reminder, included the request for a watershed permit covering the entire town of Barnstable, so not just an individual watershed, but our entire town and the watersheds that it comprises. Within this request, we also asked to remain on the previously approved 30-year implementation schedule as stated in our Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. As of August 1st of this year, Mass DEP formally notified the town that our application has completed the administrative review process, and is now currently undergoing technical review. This technical review phase will include a meeting with Mass DEP leadership, and we look forward to keeping our community informed about our progress through the review process. Now we'll shift over to our CWMP-related sewer expansion projects, the first being Strawberry Hill Road. Since we last reported, we continue to make way-- or headway on the remaining project punch list items. And just as a recap, this project, Strawberry Hill Road, was completed on schedule and on budget. All of our paving restoration is complete, so we're really in that final phase of working through our project closeout. The project punch list items do include some additional restoration on private and public property. But with that, our first connections have begun. So as previously reported, 151 parcels as part of this project are eligible for connection. That equals about 220 individual dwelling units. And again, as a reminder, this is a portion of this project route that is eligible. There is a remaining part of the project route that is dependent on the Finney's Lane Sewer Pump Station that we'll talk about in just a moment. But right now, properties on portions of Craigville Beach Road, Strawberry Hill Road, West Main Street, Will Quocket Lane, and portions of Finney's Lane have been notified by the Barnstable Board of Health that they are eligible for connection. And as of the date of this report, we have had seven residential connections completed, mainly on the Strawberry Hill Road and Craigville Beach Road areas. We have received a good amount of feedback from private contractors who have noted that September is very heavy with bookings for sewer connections. So we anticipate to see that number of connections really start to tick up over the coming weeks and months. Additionally, Route 28 East is the second project in our Phase 1 of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan that was also completed on schedule and on budget. We do have a small amount of paving that remains. You may recall specifically on Finney's Lane, the area of Strawberry Hill Road to Will Quocket Lane. Our contractor plans to return to that area this coming Monday, August 19th, and will be paving that about 1,500 to 1,600 feet of roadway throughout the week. Work will start at 8:00 a.m. and will conclude around 4:00 p.m. each day, and it will require closure of this very small section of roadway. We have issued a media release at this point, and we'll have app notifications as well as notifications on Town of Barnstable's social media sites. And we have additionally gone out and done our in-person outreach with notifications to property owners along that specific section of Finney's Lane. With that, the contractor is working towards substantial completion, and we are developing our project punch list to initiate project closeout. We anticipate sewer connections for this project, as well as the remainder of connections-- or properties, I should say-- on the Strawberry Hill Road project to be available by the end of this calendar year. So we'll be looking at sending out notifications in collaboration with the Board of Health and our Treasure Tax Collector's Office for all of those parcels as well. And with that, the Finney's Lane Pump Station is nearing completion with our testing and startup ongoing as we speak. Next on the docket will be the Centerville Village Sewer Expansion Project, in which we anticipate breaking ground this fall. As a reminder, this project has been broken into two phases, a north and a south. The north phase, which is depicted in the graphic on the left hand of your screen in green, bids opened for that project on May 17th. And as we had previously reported, CC Construction was the apparent low bidder. You may recall CC Construction was the contractor who completed the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project, so we are looking forward to working with a contractor who already is well-versed in the needs of our community. This project-- or I should say, the north phase of this project-- does include the Mother's Park Pump Station and surrounding properties listed as a bid alternate, and that was due to the Article 797 legislation we've spoken about previously. As of the date of this report, the governor has signed that Article 97 legislation into law, which is a great step forward. We're really at the finish line here, just awaiting probate and Army Corps approval before we can fully award that contract. We also did receive an extension for our state revolving fund until October 1st of this year, and that was due to the approvals for the Article 97. So we're moving along on schedule, and as I noted, looking forward to being awarded that full construction contract. And with that bid award, we will begin our property owner outreach. We anticipate hosting our first public informational session mid to late September, and as soon as that is scheduled, we will share that information with our community, as well as send out mailers to all identified property owners along the project route. Of course, that meeting will be recorded and will be available for future viewing, so whether or not you are a property owner specifically impacted by that construction, you're of course welcome to attend and learn more about the north phase construction. We do anticipate, as I noted, construction to start this fall with completion at the end of 2026. And that brings us to the south phase of the project, which is depicted in orange on that second graphic just about on the middle of your screen there. That portion of the project will sewer the remaining part of Craigville Beach Road as well as Main Street Centerville. We continue to advance that sewer design as well as our efforts to cite pump station locations and any associated easement options, and we are tentatively anticipating construction of the south phase to begin in 2025. I'd also like to touch on a notice of project change, so essentially where we intend to do additional sewer-ing as part of the CWMP, specifically in downtown Hyannis and in Mark's Path. We recently submitted an updated Notice of Project Change filed with MEPA on July 25th of this year, and it essentially proposes two things, the first being the addition of sewer-ing 57 parcels within downtown Hyannis that are adjacent to an already-- are already existing collection system. These are specifically very densely developed sections of downtown, and quite frankly, they were just overlooked at the time of the development of the CWMP. This part of the project does also include a proposed sewer pump station at 268 Stevens Street, which will support the sewer-ing of these additional 57 parcels. And for some context, in 2023, Barnstable's Planning and Development Department applied for and received a grant through the state to fund the installation of this proposed 268 Stevens Street pump station. The installation of this pump station is specifically necessary for the proposed Housing Assistance Corporation housing project at 268 Stevens Street. So kind of coming full circle here with the need for the pump station and also the need to sewer those additional parcels. The second portion of this Notice of Project Change includes proposing the additional sewer-ing of eight parcels on Mark's Path in Hyannis. And this would be in order to accommodate the replacement of the Mark's Path Sewer Pump Station. So like other evaluations we've done on sewer pump stations-- existing sewer pump stations across town, the evaluation of the Mark's Path pump station revealed that ultimately that infrastructure is at the end of its useful design life, and it does not have the capacity to accept any additional flow. Now, where would additional flow come from? The Finney's Lane Neighborhood Sewer Expansion Project, which is proposed over the next few years. That would bring additional flow to the existing Mark's Path pump station, again indicating the need for us to evaluate and essentially relocate and expand that pump station. We have worked through a number of alternatives for replacement and essentially have settled on the best technical option as being installing new sewers along Mark's Path, which will convey that additional wastewater flow to the replacement station, which is currently being proposed on town property at 767 Falmouth Road. In anticipation for the Notice of Project Change approval, the town and its consultant has started some initial public outreach specifically with the neighborhood of Mark's Path to garner feedback and really get their input on this proposed sewer-ing and the proposed pump station replacement. So we'll continue to keep the community updated, of course, as we seek approval for that Notice of Project Change. Now, before we shift over to additional wastewater and water quality initiatives, I wanted to just touch base quickly on Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan communications and where we're at with some of the initiatives we've spoken about previously. So our CWMP annual report is in final review, and it will be delivered to the Cape Cod Commission per our 208 Plan Consistency Determination. So this is sent electronically to the commission, but it also will be posted, as our previous annual reports are, on the Reports and Documents page of barnstablewaterresources.com. So I've left that direct link to that Reports and Documents page in my report here for you. With that, we also have our Sewer Connection Process document. So you may recall, this is a one-sheet process document that really just takes that full sewer connection process and boils it down to eight easy-to-understand steps, from receiving your Notice of Sewer Connection hookup all the way to septic abandonment and utility billing. That document is sent with our project closeout letter that DPW delivers to property owners at the end of a construction project and is also part of the Board of Health's mailing when they go to send out their Notice of Sewer Connection. So we have since developed both a Portuguese-- Brazilian Portuguese and a Spanish version, and both of those translated versions are now available to download on Barnstable Water Resources, again on that Reports and Documents page via the link provided in this report. And lastly, the Homeowner Sewer Connection Guide. Last we spoke, that 30-page guide was available digitally as a PDF on the Reports and Documents page, and our hard copies have now arrived. So we did quite an extensive run of hard copies for this first wave of distribution. And our distribution plan includes dropping copies off at Town Hall, at the Barnstable Health Division Office, the Barnstable Adult Community Center, our local libraries, as well as the Hyannis Youth and Community Center. And we have also are discussing some distribution partnerships with local chambers and some local businesses who we've built very solid relationships with throughout the construction season. So I would say by the end of this week, you can begin to pick up those hard copies at the various town locations. And if you feel like there is a location in town where we should have these hard copies available, certainly reach out to me, Kelly Colpey, at the Department of Public Works, or feel free to drop a message on the Barnstable Water Resources website. I should note, of course, we have hard copies available at the DPW located on Falmouth Road, so plenty of opportunities for you to be able to get a hard copy or download your digital version. Now we'll just shift over to a couple of additional sewer-ing and water quality projects. The first is our 720 Main Street Pump Station Replacement Project. Overall, work is continuing on-site, not a ton to update since our last report, other than the fact that we do have our foundation at the pump station site advancing above grade. So our initial foundation pour is complete. You'll see the structure actually coming to life in this photo here. Our in-road construction, as you likely recall, Our in-road construction, as you likely recall, has been completed for the summer season. We do expect to resume in-road construction for the remaining of the sewer that needs to be installed this fall. We're tentatively looking at October per the contractor's schedule, and that will include essentially these specific sections, Dumont Drive, which will be the connection into the pump station, South Street at C Street, that sewer connection there, and then some additional sewer tie-ins on Main Street. So as we prepare for in-road construction and any likely traffic impacts, we will, of course, keep our community involved and engaged and do all of our normal communications in terms of media releases and social media and app updates, and of course, our in-person outreach throughout the Main Street area. That project is essentially 46% complete at this point, so we're making great progress. And just to give you another visual, we'll take a look at this nice aerial that was captured by our contractor, and this is just recent, from this month of August. So you can really see that the site is coming to life there, and you get a really good idea of what the infrastructure looks like for that pump station building. Looking at the water pollution control facility, our solids processing facility upgrades are nearly complete. Substantial completion for that project was issued last month on July 10th, and the contract was extended to the end of this month, August 31st, to allow the contractor to just wrap up final project punch list items and essentially close out the contract. Nitrogen removal and headworks improvements, as you likely remember, is the number-one ranked project in our 2024 Draft Clean Water Fund Intended Use Plan, the State's Plan. And we are, of course, very grateful for the town council's appropriation for the funding of these facility upgrades, which were approved on April 25th of this year. With that, we have progressed towards the 60% design drawing point. We anticipate receiving the 60% design set plans for review by the end of this month, and then we continue to move along on schedule with construction anticipated to begin in the fall of 2025. Additionally, effluent disposal and evaluation continues to progress. We continue to work through our alternatives analysis with our consultant, CDM Smith, and of course, continue to host our monthly meetings with Mass DEP. Lastly, we're going to look at a project we are working on with the Hyannis Water System, the Straightway and Hyannis Port Water Treatment Facilities Improvements Project. Essentially, the purpose of this project is to improve overall system resiliency with our Hyannis water system. We're looking to maximize the permanent capacity of the Hyannis water system by improving both of these treatment facilities, as well as increase the amount of water that the wells can supply. Over time, of course, you know, these wells start to just have, you know, normal degradation, so it's time to really improve them and build upon them, and as I mentioned, improve that overall system resiliency. This also will come with some work that will protect the wells and buildings from flooding, which is, of course, important, and then overall, just improve the water treatment process and further improve our water quality through the Hyannis water system. So where are we with this project? It's still very much in a preliminary stage. We have begun our public outreach process. This included mailings to all property owners within one mile, a one-mile buffer of the project area. And we also held our first public informational meeting on August 6th, which included translation services. So we had translators available, so the meeting was available in English, Portuguese, and Spanish. All materials are also available in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, and it can be found on the Town of Barnstable website. If you were to go to the DPW page underwater supply, I've provided a link to the project page as well, so you can find the meeting recording. You can find all of the mailers and translated versions as well, as well as the full presentation that was provided during the public outreach meeting. So a lot of great information if you didn't get a chance to attend the meeting or are just interested in general about the project. Next steps include working towards the 60% design this month, and then in September, the consultant is anticipating filing our environmental notification form, environmental impact report with a public comment period. So once that filing moves forward and we have a public comment period for this project, we will certainly share that with the community. And then, starting this fall, we hope to work towards a final design and permit approvals with, you know, anticipated bidding and contract award and construction to follow. That concludes our Water Resources update. Thank you.